We are going to get started and we are going to start with the resuscitation of the vision statement. Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. The second item on our agenda is approval of the minutes dated May 23rd, 2016. Is there a motion?
Second. Third.
It's all right. I have enough to give you.
Okay, Michael moves. Dean seconds. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting dated May 23rd. Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. We now have two public appearances. And the first public appearance is Melinda Heinrichs, followed by Pamela Mather. Melissa, you have three minutes and whenever you want, just get started.
All right. Thank you. My name is Melinda Heinrichs. I'm the new executive director of the Foundation for Madison's Public Schools. This is my second week on the job and just wanted to show up tonight and introduce myself and express what a privilege it is to work with our school district, our teachers, our students, our schools. Very much look forward to working with all of you and I think a number of staff that I've met or saw this morning at the press conference. Congratulations on all the great progress that is underway and just look forward to working with you closely to continue those trends. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
My name is Pamela Mather. I woke up this morning and didn't expect to be here. So, I'm just gonna tell you what pushed me to come down on this nice night to talk to you. I picked up my daughter's collapsible chair that she had used when she was working for MCR at the gall following. She's on the board of MCR. So, I went to Hoyt School, which is in my neighborhood, and picked it up. And then I thought, you know, I've been wanting to do this for two or three years and I've not gotten it farther down the path of being successful. In 1970s, Hoyt School was a viable school, a school in my neighborhood and my kids all went there. One of the things that was wonderful is parents and kids built a playground. And it was back where everybody was building a playground, but we thought ours was special because kids designed it, parents came together and raised money, and we dedicated it to Ira Taylor. Ira Taylor was the custodian of our school. He was the only one on the list that its children wanted to have their playground named after. The school closed. The playground is covered with weeds and many of the pieces have been dismantled. But the name on the building says Ira Taylor Playground. And what I would like to do, and there's a custodian there who would like to do it too, is remove that sign from outside the building so it weathers no more and that we can put it inside the building with a story of Hoyt School, the Ira Taylor Playground. So, I'm asking you tonight to cut through all the red tape that my phone calls would have done and the 27 people I would have talked to. I want a letter that I can go over to the building supervisor and say, could the custodian I take that down? And can we store it until we can come to you with what we're going to do and where we're going to place it, whether it's here at the building or it's where I want it to be at Hoyt School? I wish I had the failings of people I've talked to. But were they're not here tonight because I just thought I'd do it. I have a picture on my phone. I have talked to the president of, or the person who was the committee chair who built the park, built the playground. I've got old documents. I've talked to everybody who built that playground. And we would like to do that. We would like to do it and have another Hoyt party and we'd like to celebrate Ira Taylor. He, of course, is dead and so is his wife and probably his children. But that's what I'm asking for, is a letter that I can walk in that building and that me and the custodian can take it down and save it and then you all can come to the party.
Thank you, Pamela.
Pamela, Mike Berry's gonna follow up with you. Our head, Mike Berry's in the audience, our head of building or business services. So, we'll make that connection now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's do it and I will be back and invite you all to our big party because Hoyt neighborhood and the Hoyt community still would like to party on this one.
Thank you. Well, that is the end of our public appearances and next is the Board Presidents' announcements and reports. And I have one announcement this evening and that is the Read Up Family Nights celebrates reading at Madison's elementary schools. Students at Lakeview, Elvum, Lincoln, and Lapham Elementary Schools are participating in the Read Up program this summer. Read Up encourages students to love reading and provides families with helpful tools to encourage kids to read. Families are also invited to schools for family nights where they eat dinner, do craft projects, play word games, and read together. Read Up is a partnership among MMSD, the United Way of Dane County, and the Madison Public Library. Thank you to our partners and our families for your support of this wonderful program. And with that, I will pass it over to the superintendent for her announcements and reports.
Thanks, Barbara. Okay. I'm very pleased to present to the board a quick overview on our annual report, which was released earlier today. Several of you were at our celebration press conference and I thank you for that. While I have the opportunity, I'd love to publicly thank Rachel Struck Nelson, Liz Murfeld from our communications office, Amy Knight, who's the new designer in our communications office, who did this really beautiful work on the annual report. And I also want to thank our research accountability and data use team for the hard work that goes into producing results so that we can actually make the report at this time every year. It was wonderful this morning to be joined by staff, students, families, community members, board members, to really celebrate not only our progress, but the collaborative effort that it takes to make progress as a school district and bring our district's vision to life, which is the statement that Mary just recited. As you know, we're anchoring this year's report to our graduate vision, which was developed with input from over 2,500 parents, students, staff, and community members over a year ago, as a way to better articulate the skills and abilities that we think that every student needs to be successful in life after high school. The great news is that we believe that we already have students that help us see what the future can be for all children. While there's a lot more work to be done, we think that we're making some progress bringing that vision to life. We're building more momentum as a school district, beginning to see some areas where we're not just making progress across student groups, but actually accelerating progress, which is very exciting. And most important, we think that we're not seeing these results by accident. It's a result of intentional actions that we're taking as a district and as a community. The report highlights the progress that we're making on our strategy, as captured in our strategic framework, aimed at measurable goals, as you know, in student achievement. Our strategy has three major components, which are highlighted in the report. First, it starts with the school improvement planning process, which institutionalized that disciplined way of working that we know is crucial if we're going to raise student achievement and narrow gaps. The approach that we've been taking has had the most impact to date at the elementary level, where this past year, eight out of 12 of our schools that receive intensive support on their SIP implementation are seeing improvement that outpaces, and in many cases, far outpaces the district's gains. It also includes our approach to professional learning that helps us all deepen our understanding as educators on what great teaching looks like in the classroom and helps us continually examine our implicit bias and understand racial equity. And our strategy depends on the work of central office, which is the five priority areas. These areas were identified to make sure that our tool, our schools have the tools and resources they need to be successful and to tear down institutional barriers that stand in our students' way. One thing that I wanted to highlight, and I highlighted at the press conference earlier today, when it comes to our priority area on developing a thriving workforce, to date this hiring season, we've more than doubled the number of teachers of color that we hired. We're at 55 and counting and we look forward to providing those final numbers in the fall when teacher hiring is complete. In addition to highlighting the work that we're doing regarding strategy, the report also highlights our results and maybe more important, our next steps. And I wanted to give you just a few examples that we've highlighted in the report. First, early reading is on the rise. In the past year, we've seen student groups show increases in foundational reading skills as measured by PALS at the end of second grade. We saw a six percentage point increase to 78 percent, meeting benchmark. A 12-point increase for African-American students, a 10-point increase for Latino students, 10 points for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and nine for students with disabilities. In addition to that, still on early reading, we're also seeing more students reading with proficiency by the end of third grade as measured by math. African-American students increased reading proficiency yet again with a 10-point increase over two years compared to a five-point increase overall. This is the kind of gap narrowing progress that we want to see across all of our metrics. And like I said before, we don't think this is by accident. It's a result of the targeted efforts that we've implemented when it comes to early literacy, especially the work that we've done in our elementary schools that receive intensive support. And based on the success, we're going to be expanding that intensive support K5 as well as into our middle schools that receive intensive support in the upcoming year. On middle schools, we've also highlighted recent efforts in middle school mathematics. We saw a 4 percent increase in math proficiency in grades six through eight this year, which we think is because of the stronger core curriculum that we've established in mathematics across all of our middle schools. Based on that progress, we're looking forward to establishing a similar common curriculum in reading in the upcoming year. And then finally, I wanted to say a little bit about high school graduation rates. As a reminder, high school grad rates do have a one-year lag. So, while we're measuring our progress, it always comes in from DPI a year later. So, we're measuring two years of graduation rates now, but they continue to move in the right direction. We've increased two percentage points overall in the past two years to 80.4 percent graduating with promising results across many student groups, including five points over those two years for African-American students, 10 points for students with disabilities, and four points for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And as we mentioned at the press conference earlier today, we have a couple of high schools in particular who are making accelerated progress. And LaFollette in particular stands out. Their grad rate for African-American students is now at 80 percent, which is on par with the district's average. And that's up from 65.8 percent just two years ago. This is phenomenal, phenomenal progress. We believe these gains are a direct result of the more disciplined way of working we're establishing at our high schools and those systems are getting stronger in future years, especially as we fully implement the ninth grade on track system, which we know is one of the keys to our success. So, in addition to highlighting some of the results, as I mentioned, we do use this report to highlight our next steps. What are the things we're going to double down on to make sure that progress continues and that progress begins in the areas where we're not seeing it yet? I've already mentioned a few of these things. I want to, in addition to the first three bullets, which are really focused on academic improvement at elementary, middle, and high school, we're going to be doubling down on increasing access and participation in advanced coursework, like AP classes at our high schools with a focus on students of color. And we need to double down on school climate, particularly when it comes to the student experience at our schools, by paying more attention to issues like bullying and to pay more attention to students' sense of belonging in school, especially at the secondary level. So, you'll see us working on that in the upcoming year. I do want to give a shout out to all of the schools that were highlighted in the report. There's so many schools we could highlight. It's always a challenge to decide on which ones. And it was wonderful to see students, parents, and teachers from each of these schools represented at our celebration this morning. And it was especially wonderful to get to highlight some of our graduates themselves. As a reminder, we want to have a, what we're calling, a proleptic point of view about students, which is seeing them not only for who they are, but for the people that they're becoming, for the people who they can become. And these students give us a really clear picture of what's possible for all students in MMSD. So, congratulations to the board, congratulations to our team. We did submit another community call to action this year, which is building on our community call to action last year. We cannot do it on our own. We depend on our community plugging into our school district and organizing around our students and our schools. We want and need more support in developing opportunities for youth leadership and youth voice. I actually think this is a weakness, not just within our own school district, but I think in the community, generally speaking. The second area that we're asking people to help is around mentoring and tutoring. We want every single child to have at least one adult in their lives that push them and keep them on track to graduation. And then third, we are looking for more support on community schools. And this is really about supporting high-need schools that exist in high-needs neighborhoods so that there are fewer barriers to parents being able to fully participate in their child's education. So, thankful to those who have already stepped up, 100 Black Men, the Omega Boys Club on the mentoring side, and very thankful to the Madison Community Foundation for the support on getting community schools off the ground. We'll continue to hold our core values at the center of decision-making, this idea of excellence with equity. We want to hold every child, every adult to high expectations, but give them what they need to meet and exceed those high expectations. We want to continue to keep schools at the center. We truly believe the best decisions are made by the people who work most closely with children. We want to emphasize this idea of shared leadership and collective responsibility at the school level. And then we're going to continue to sustain our focus. We've got to stay focused on excellent teaching in the classroom. And you're going to hear us talking more and more in this upcoming year about the concept of not just learning in the classroom, but deep learning and what does that look like? So, I'll end it there. Thank you, everyone. It's been a good year and we're already gearing up for the year to come. So, happy to take any questions or comments, but mostly just wanted to take a spin through the annual report for you.
I just wanted to make a quick highlight and, or really re-highlight. I love our reports. I love the fact that it emphasizes our students, the pictures. Again, they're not stock pictures, they're actual students in our schools and the great work that they are doing and the same as parents and our teachers. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I echo Michael's comment. The report, the presentation, and all the work that has gone into it has certainly paid off. And I understand there's going to be even more on the website. Is that true?
Yes. It's already there. If you want to check it out. So, for every school that's highlighted, and again, more importantly, for every student that's highlighted, there are audio interviews with all of them, a lot more information about their individual stories, which I think is going to be rich and demonstrate what's possible in our school district. So, thanks for saying that, Mary.
Yeah, I would like to echo that. I thought it was a great presentation today and I look forward to when we can hire Harry Davis.
I know. Yeah, Harry Davis is gonna be, if it works out well, a future teacher or principal in our district. It's beautiful. And his video clip has already been posted, is that right, Rachel? It's on our Facebook page, I think, his part of the press conference. You should definitely check out his speech. It's really inspiring. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Well, we will now move on to the consent agenda and I'd ask whether any of the board members have any separations.
I'd like to separate 610, 611, and I'd like to just ask some questions on 614, but not separate it. 610 is the youth apprenticeship contract, not the partnership. 611 is the COGAT screener and 614 is the National Equity Project. Unless my numbers are wrong.
I will be separating 6.7 and 6.8 on avid contracts, just to abstain from that vote. Any other separations? Okay. Well, then I would ask for a motion for approval of all of the motions said fourth and section six of the electronic agenda prepared for the July 25th, 2016 regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any expressed separations that have been made by any school board member. And just as a reminder, that's 610, 611, 67, and 68.
So moved. I move second.
TJ moves. Is there a second? Am I your advisory vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. So, why don't we go to 67 and read that separately? So...
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve entering into the Avid Implementation Agreement with the Avid Center for a total expenditure of $63,865 with funding from the 2016-17 Avid budget.
Second.
Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 501.
And moving on, I move that we approve expenditures that will occur in summer 2016 in the amount of $15,800 with the Avid Center for Avid Path Training with funding from the 2016-17 Avid budget.
Second.
Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 501. Okay. TJ, you want to go to 610?
Yeah. I don't want to spend too much time on this. I spoke to some of these issues at the operations work group. 610 is the youth apprenticeship contract and I spoke to it in the context of the partnership and certainly not opposing the partnership. I just think that, kind of two pieces of this. Number one is that the performance by our partner, the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce Foundation, over the last four or five years has not been great. And yet, we continue to subsidize them and give them and pay for this. And so, under those circumstances, I'd either like to find a new partner or I'd like to see a performance-based contract. The other piece of this is that the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce is an organization that is, has great fundraising potential. And yet, we are paying for this position and, you know, they talk publicly about their commitment to our students and education, our community, yet rather than having their own staff position that they raise money for, they come to us to pay for this position and that just doesn't sit very well with me. So, I'll be voting against this. But again, I don't want to, you know, that's my position.
Any other comments? With that, I will move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure of $60,000 payable to the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce Foundation to support implementation of the youth apprenticeship program during the 2016-17 school year. Second?
Second.
Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes 510. TJ, 611?
611 is the COGAT screener. This is one of the tools we use, not the only tool, but one of the tools we use to identify advanced learner students, students for our advanced learner programming and identification. I find both, well, this, I believe that this test, the use of this test contributes to the disparities we have in that programming. And there are many people who, researchers on testing fairness and testing bias, who agree with that position. And since that program, the disparities are so stark, I think that using any identification mechanism that exacerbates disparities is a mistake. So, again, I'll be voting against this. Plus Lauren would be mad at me if I didn't.
Okay. Any, any... Yeah, go ahead.
Can you tell me a little bit more about what are the problems with this that you're seeing?
It's, it, 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 you know, I'm not an expert on psychometrics, but consistently this test over-identifies white, middle-class students and under-identifies other students. And we have supplementary means of identification that in some ways address that. And I recognize that. And so, I think that, you know, we're making an effort. There are, it's my understanding that there are some other screeners that are perhaps, the non-verbal screeners, the, spacing out on the name of a Jen, can you, the something begins with the letter M, if I remember right, the something non-verbal screener, it's Dan here, but anyway, that are less biased. Almost any screener we use is going to have biases. And so, the question is, I mean, that's the reality. I've never been comfortable with using this tool and, you know, and I recognize we do, probably do need to have a screener. It's, and we do supplement it and I'm happy we do. And so, that's, that's my position on it.
Comment on this very quickly. We do use multiple factors for identifying students for services, advanced learning services, and we do need a screener. We did choose a couple of years ago to narrow this down to a kind of shortened version of the COGAT, which at least isn't as time-intensive as it originally was or expensive. And I do think this, everything we do in terms of identification will be folded into our evaluation on advanced learners. It's just getting kicked off, too. So, it'll be really interesting information to hear from an external point of view what's happening with our screening mechanisms. But this is something that we need to have at this point as part of our suite for identifying students.
And just to pick up on what Jen said, perhaps with the advanced learner evaluation, there will be alternates offered and, and probably a more coherent critique of this also. So, and, you know, and that's something that we should, you know, we should look for and ask for.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay. Anna?
Yeah, I would agree, TJ, with your statements around these standardized evaluations really being biased and keeping people, students, out of programs when they should be. So, I think moving forward with the review and the audit to look at how significant that bias is and if there's alternatives, I would be interested in knowing about that as well.
Well, then I will move that the Board of Education approve the expenditure of $48,163.78 for the purchase of the COGAT screener assessment from Houghton Mifflin Harcourt for grades two and five with funding from the 2016-17... two and five, with funding from the 2016-17 Office of the Assessment Administration budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes 5-0-1. 5-1-0, thank you. And TJ, 614?
Yeah, which has already passed, so just to make that clear to everyone. 614 is the National Equity Project, and as I was reading through this, and looking through the TIF budget thing, and an expansion of this work with the same people next year, it just occurred to me, and this is something that perhaps we can have, you know, a longer-term conversation about, so not to spring this at the last minute, but I understand generally what kind of outcomes we're looking for, but I guess that, I'm wondering, as we go into year two and year three of working with them, kind of, can we, I think perhaps we should start looking at, and perhaps the administration has already, kind of specific outcomes, places where, where to say, be it through climate surveys, be it through hiring patterns, be it through, something like that, and I think that going into year three, that, and, you know, of a contract with an organization, this is year two now, but as we look forward, that's something I'd be very interested in, instead of the more general goals that are laid out in the memo that came with it. And so, you know, if you wanted to speak to that now a little bit, or just kind of put that off to the side, and we'll get back to it, either way, again, this is something that I don't want to throw out to you right out of the blue, so...
Yeah, that's not a problem, TJ, and it's not out of the blue at all. Actually, Mary has asked me similar questions in the past, maybe not a surprise. Yeah, and I think that, I actually think it's something that we need to more clearly define. What exactly do we want to use as metrics to measure impact of this work? And I actually think that your mention of the climate survey is right on. I think that that might be one of the most rich indicators of change when it comes to our work with the National Equity Project, which is more about impact on attitudes, beliefs, experiences, right, which lead the way for change in other areas. So I just appreciate the comment, and we'll make sure to bring that back to the board for discussion at a later date.
Excellent. Well, with that, we would move on to the report and action on items that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group, but since we didn't have a meeting this month, we do not have a report or any action items. The next meeting will be on August 1, and the agenda items are the Special Education Plan and Educator Effectiveness. And with that, I will turn it over to Ed Hughes for the report and action on items that proceeded through the Operations Work Group held on July 18.
Thank you. We had a full agenda at our meeting on July 18. The first item we, well, one of the items we talked about was our long-range facility plan update. We kind of got a progress report on how that was going, and the presentation really focused on two areas. One was the community growth projections, and the other was our ongoing work on community engagement with respect to the long-range planning. The long-range enrollment projections, which are really long-range, they're about 20 years old, were based on a little more sophisticated analysis than we've done in the past, in terms of going through really kind of a parcel-by-parcel analysis and trying to see where specifically in the district there may be growth, or there won't be growth. And the indications are that over the next 20 years, we will have some gradual growth of about 1,600 students. Most of it, as you would expect, kind of on the periphery, more, the most would be in the Memorial area, and then the second most would be in the LaFouled area. West would have a little bit of growth, but really just kind of not significant, and just a tiny decrease in student population in the East area is projected. That suggests or raises issues about whether our current facilities, our schools, will be sufficient over that period of time, and there are a few schools that look like they'll be picking up some students, including Olson and Kennedy and Stevens and Alvum, and we'll have to make sure that if those projections come through, that we have enough space there, particularly at Olson, which looks like it may stand to have the biggest game. What we aren't able to take into account at this point is the uncertainties around open enrollment and vouchers and independent charter schools that might be established. With respect to the community engagement, we kind of got a mid-course report on that as well, and there has been quite a bit that's going on so far, including visiting 17 schools and having 11 focus groups and 13 building tours, and the early lessons from that outreach was really nothing that was too surprising. People who participated had strong feelings about our facilities and know what our constraints are, but would like to know what we plan to do and when, get some specific proposals. So we will take that into account, and coming up this fall, there will be more work in terms of attendance area review, we'll get an updated building conditions report, and there will be continuing engagement and seeking input from stakeholders on what we should do. So that was the long-range facility plan update. We also talked about some updating of some board policies, and those are before us tonight. And I will get there. We have several policies that are proposed to be amended or reviewed, and I would, I will...
Do you want me to read the numbers to you?
No, I think I'm getting there. I move that we approve the changes to Board of Education policies, 1022, board vacancies, 3151 auto mechanics, 3340 student activity fee waiver, 3710 A, B, and C, which are fees, fines, and rentals, 4150 student records, and 8441 pregnancy and maternity leave, and 8905 non-medical leave of absence, and both of those last two are proposed to be revised out of existence. All is set forth, and the material is prepared for this July 25, 2016 regular meeting with set revisions to take effect immediately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? TJ?
I want to thank Dylan for responsive work on the, following the Operations Work Group on responding to the issues brought up there, and think that you found some good ways, just particularly on the board vacancies.
Yeah, me too.
Great. All right, then I guess we're ready to vote. Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any aye, any opposed? Those pass 6 to nothing. We also talked about the High Intensity Partnership Renewal for the Youth Apprenticeship Program, and before us tonight is a memorandum of agreement for the renewal of this partnership that involves our Office of Personalized Pathways, the Workforce Development Board of South Central Wisconsin, the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce, the Dade County School Consortium, and Operation Fresh Start. The memorandum of agreement is a two-year agreement, and that is meant to kind of harmonize with our other partnership review timeline, such that we get on our regular three-year review cycle. And I will, I will move that we approve a memorandum of agreement for the renewal of the High Intensity Partnership Youth Apprenticeship to be carried out by the MMSD Office of Personalized Pathways, Work Development Board of South Central Wisconsin, Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce, Dade County School Consortium, and Operation Fresh Start as set forth in the documents prepared for the July 25, 2016 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Dean?
I want to ask her something.
Sorry, Julie.
You just want to get Julie up here one last time. You are correct. Julie, you made us look good. Every time I went to a meeting and you were there, you made us look really good. We're going to miss you, thanks for all this stuff.
Thank you very much. Super awkward, thank you very much. As I said, Anna, it's like the most anticlimactic leaving, and I'm still here. But it's just, it's been a pleasure for me to work for the Madison School District. I've just, I've grown as a human being, and serving our students has been my greatest privilege, so thank you for that, Anna.
Julie, can I ask you a substantive question?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, Ed.
The two-year MOA seems to have the same goals for the first and second year?
Yeah, we probably will make some, we might maybe be able to make some minor course corrections during year two, when we talk with our partnerships office, we felt we might be able to bring back some revisions if we feel like that's warranted in year two to the board. But we wanted to kind of keep moving forward with where we're at now, and see what minor tweaks we might need to make as we shift.
Okay, so we're not locked into those?
No. No, with all of our, with all of our MOAs, we can make adjustments and shifts as needed to respond in the moment. So if we find that something's not working within the MOA, we would bring it back to the board for revision. Again, that kind of syncs with that GMCC Contract for Services only being one year, and not completely aligned to the MOA as well, in that way.
Anyone else? All right.
And we did just want to point out, we did make the one minor change that Anna had asked at our last meeting to the language in that one, and our partners were fine with that shift.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No, that passes 6 to nothing. And our next meeting is on August 8, and we will be talking about, I think you play handbook for AfSPEE folks.
Yeah, AfSPEE.
And as far as I know, that's the only thing on the agenda at this point. We will be talking about the referendum, potential referendum, I don't know whether that's in the work group or special meeting.
It's in a special meeting, so that same night, we'll be having a discussion about referendum, which will lead likely into a week later, another discussion on the referendum, and potentially a public hearing. And depending on how all of that goes, if the board wants to continue to move ahead, we'll find a place for the board to vote before the month is out. So, thank you, Ed.
And also, the contract regarding EROs will be taken up in that discussion meeting.
That is correct, so on the 8th, we will be taking up that discussion and voting as well.
Great, thank you. That's my report.
Okay, well, then we move on to the report of the City of Madison Education Committee. Anna, can you give us an update?
I will. The City Education Committee met on Wednesday, July 13, with all members present except James Howard. The first topic for the meeting included further discussion and information sharing about the role of EROs in our high schools in order to guide the committee on possible recommendations moving forward. These would be recommendations moving into the next contract cycle, not this one. Prior to the discussion, we had three community members share public comments in regard to questions and concerns they had about these positions. Heather Allen and Quentin Penn-Joyner, staffer and intern from the City of Madison, shared some general information about EROs with the committee, including best practice guidelines from the ACLU and NASRA, the National Association of School Resource Officers. After the presentation, committee members shared comments and created a list of questions to further investigate prior to compiling any recommendations. Another data request was made to City of Madison staff, as well as discussion about, including EROs in the upcoming review of the Madison Police Department, which recently passed the Common Council. The majority of members felt this to be appropriate and beneficial to the committee's work. We also were provided with a PowerPoint presentation by Big Brothers Big Sisters of Dade County, led by Sandy Morales and Christina Beachbaum-Gartner, which highlighted their mentoring program and its great outcomes. This organization will be celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. We can all help them celebrate by signing up to become a mentor. Future topics for this committee will include a report on mental health in schools pilot, I think they were referencing building bridges, it was from Carousel, and she wasn't quite sure of it, most community schools, facility user fees, and district transportation guidelines, as well as an update on the ERO data request. And I don't know the next time we're meeting. I should have written that down.
August 10, second Wednesday, you should...
Yeah, August 10, second Wednesday.
Well, thank you, Anna. And Amaya, I'll turn it over to you for a report from Student Summit.
We haven't had any meetings yet, as it is the summertime, but we're hoping to have a couple in August, just to discuss a few issues for our school year agenda. We want to get a few things hashed out before the school year begins, so we start on a strong foot. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. With that, we will move on to other business, and we do have an action item, and that is a DPI waiver. And so, I will move that the Board of Education approve a request to the Department of Public Instruction for a waiver of the requirements under PI 34, allowing MMSD emergency licensure for middle childhood to early adolescence licensed teachers to also teach kindergarten.
Second.
Any discussion? Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. And given that there is no old or new business for this meeting, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm going to do that again, because I don't get to chair that often, so I want to at least finish on a strong note. Am I your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, 6-0.
Wow, man. That's a record.